Go ahead and accept, uh, accept the motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Please put your microphones close so that everybody out there can hear. Okay, the next thing we have is we have our new city council member Marvin Sullivan that's gonna be sworn in, so Marvin if you'd come up to the podium with me please. Okay Marvin, if you'd go ahead and raise your right hand please. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties devolving upon me.
As a member of the city council for the city of La Sueur.
As a member of the city council for the city of La Sueur.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Be ready to work. Marvin?
I got it.
Okay. Well, that was the easy part. Okay. So for our consent agenda tonight, we have three items. We have city council minutes for July 23rd, 2018. We have the approval of disbursements through August 13th, 2018, and a surplus property declaration. Go ahead and entertain a motion to go ahead and accept the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. The next thing we have on the docket is our public comment portion, and I do not have anybody on the sheet here other than Ron Moro here just to be a listener. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to address city council tonight? Okay, well again, thank you very much for all taking the time to go ahead and show up. Can I go ahead and get a motion to go ahead and close the, uh, public comment portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to our regular portion of tonight's agenda. First item up is item seven alpha, which is the 2018 second quarter financial report, and presenting tonight is our city finance guru Zach Dowd. Welcome.
Mayor Hank, members of the city council, we have our Q2 financial report, and as the mayor stated, Zach Dowd, the contracted finance director, will give a report. Just a heads up, one question that did come up from council member Johnson today was about revenues and just the timing of revenues. We received an LGA payment in July, which will be included in the Q3 report. So if you look at, when we go through this, you'll see revenues are down slightly significantly because it's a large sum of money, but overall Zach can touch on it. We're, we've received more revenue than what's been projected so far this year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Zach.
Welcome Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council for having me tonight. I do want to touch base quickly on the second quarter report. We'll go through it rather quickly. There's not a whole lot of major things that happened. I'll touch base on the revenues portion. Otherwise, it's pretty boring reports. There's not a whole lot of changes from budget that we expected, so, which is good to hear. I'll go to start off page three, just to touch base quickly on our total cash balance that we have for the city. Which is on the PowerPoint in front of you. I just want to touch base quickly on the amount of cash that we have compared to where we were at year end last year, at 123117. 1.8 million dollars more in cash than we had before. That's due to good investing, starting to actually invest in our future and making sure that we have enough money stored away for future projects and stuff that we're starting to work on. It's all, it's a combination of all the things that we've touched base on in the past that we did through the budget last year. I think it's, I think it's a great step for the city. We're moving in the right direction, just trying to make sure we have enough money so we don't have to go bond for everything. That was with the previous councils and previous way the city operated was bonding on everything, and we don't want to have to do all that stuff. So I'd rather plan than have to all of a sudden do it just because we have to bond for it. So it's great to, great to see, and kudos to Jasper for keeping on that stuff, which is good. Okay, moving on. The graph here, quickly, I just want to touch base on where we're at during the year. As you can see, the 2018 June number is the highest it's been thus far through the year. It's also, you know, the highest it's ever been in June as well. That does not include LGA dollars, which we'll touch base in a second. LGA dollars is about $475,000. Or $487,000, sorry, $487,000 this, in July. So that's great to see. Again, we're moving in the right direction, moving forward with, really focusing on investing in the city overall, so. Any questions on the graph overall? I'll touch base on the revenues that council member Johnson had as questions prior to the meeting, but.
Could you, just for the record, could you elaborate in regards to the 182.2% of forestry?
Yes, so I will, I could touch base on the next page or this page, which is fine. The forestry has to do with Dan Greep. His severance package was paid out of that fund, or that code department. I have not moved that money into the line item that we had allocated for those severance packages in 2018 yet. I was waiting to have them all done, which Ron Cenell just had his severance package paid out too, so. Now that they're all paid out during the year, I will move those dollars over to the unallocated ones, and those will be corrected the third quarter.
Temporarily for Ron Cenell, that would come out in the streets?
You got it, yep. So you won't see that until the third quarter, but again, I'll move those dollars before the third quarter even happens, so you shouldn't, shouldn't be a big note of anything. But currently, Dan Greep is in the forestry numbers, that's why it's so high.
Just to make sure everybody's aware, so when we, when we do these, I'll call them severance packages, they go, they come out of the payroll line items, and then what we do is we have the unallocated expenses, which that's where we actually budgeted for. Zach will do a journal entry transfer from that fund to the payroll funds, and then that'll even that out.
Correct.
And that'll, that usually happens towards the end of the year.
Yep. Yes.
Can we point out for the audience where we're at right now on that graph? Cause I don't think they can.
Oh yeah, I think Jasper was trying to get the little circle to get where we're at, but we're just at that red line, basically, right in the middle there.
And that doesn't include the LGA that we just received in July.
You got it. That includes, that does not include the $487,000 payment of LGA we got in July.
And that's the dark blue line.
You got it, the dark blue line. I don't have, all I have is dark gray on mine, so. Flipping back a couple pages, we'll touch base on the general fund. It's page six in your packet of information. Again, this is where noted, council member Johnson noted that there was a significant decrease in the amount of total revenues that we have at year-to-date, we're about 64% of budget so far. If you add in that $487,000 amount of LGA, if we would've got it on the halfway through the year, we'd actually be over budget by, it'd be about 110% or so, 115% of revenues, which is great. Again, this has to do with building activity in the city too as well, that helps a ton, and then just receiving more dollars overall in that, in that fund, it's been great, so. So I think it was a great question, though. Thank you very much for that. For expenses, the one that, you know, touched base on, we could touch on parks quickly. Parks maintenance is under budget, and it's based mostly because we don't have a whole lot of activity that happens through the second quarter. We have June, part of May, but most of it happens in July and August and September, so we should see a significant increase in those dollars in the third quarter. I know that the mayor had a question on forestry, and we're about $10,000 over that. Has to do with the angry severance package. Again, we'll move those dollars in the third quarter, so you won't even see those things. They'll be in the unallocated expenditures line item, and those should line, line up better to budget. Any other questions on the general fund? Like I said, overall, it's been pretty boring, but I think those are good, good points to hit on. Okay, moving to the next page. Total cash fund balances, I'm not gonna touch much on this because it's really hard to see, but there's, we have just so many funds. Our goal is in the next year is to really reduce some of these funds that we have and make sure that it's just simpler accounting. If I don't have to have 40 funds, it's easier for you guys to understand, it's easier for me to understand too, and we don't have so many funds. Most of them have to do with bonding though, bonding and capital projects, which I have to keep separate, so we'll do as much reconciling as we can, but I can only do so much before we can, I don't want to mix dollars, so. Yes?
Jasper has helped me understand lines 601 and 62, but can you comment on the water meters replacement and what impact that's had on the budget?
So, I can't directly with the water meter usage. I think Jasper can maybe more relate to that, but I can talk about the dollars and the rate increases. The rate's been, it's a small rate increase that we had this year, but it does help significantly, especially with the water meter replacement. I know we finished that project, was it middle of last year Jasper?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we finished that project in the middle of last year, so that's why you're seeing such a variance in where we were year-to-date last year and this year. If you look at the water fund, we'll go to the next page, I think it's on page... A nine... 10, that's where the water fund's at. As you can see, the, about a 200 or $167,000 variance compared to last year at this time. That has to do with those water meters. As those water meters got replaced and fully implemented, again, it took about four years to get that project fully implemented. Once those were fully implemented, then it has significantly helped our fund. Just for our usage, those water meters are more accurate, so our pump-to-bill ratio has increased significantly since we did that project overall. But that pump-to-bill ratio is, for everyone to understand, is that when we pump water out of the ground, we want to bill as much as we possibly can because we don't want to lose that. You're gonna lose some through evaporation, through when we clean, you know, have fire hydrant, discharges and stuff like that, and those things, but we want to be in the, I think the recommended amount for OSA or the League of Minnesota Cities is between 85 and 90%. I think we're at high 70s right now currently, if I'm not mistaken. Again, we're doing some work to make sure that we're getting that up to that 85 to 90% area.
And when I was asking Jasper about it, I had forgotten or overlooked the fact that since the water meters are more accurate and the water, um, volume is more accurately measured, the sewer income also goes up because that's directly tied to the water.
You got it, exactly. 100% correct.
And I can touch base on the, on the gallons billed to pumped. We are actually right around 85 to 88%, or 85 to 82% efficient, so we got a little room to, to make it better, but, you know, we're definitely making progress on it, and you can see that in the graph. One, one aspect is that we did raise the, the rates, the water rates slightly. The usage rate went up, I believe, 3%. And the service charge went up $1 per user per month. So you'll see that directly related along with the meters. So that's why you see a significant increase in revenues from the previous years.
Correct.
Zach, if you would be kind enough to go ahead and explain notes three and four on page seven.
Sure.
Involving the revolving loan fund, and what the significance of that was for second quarter.
Sure, so in, I believe it was April or May, Sam DiMaggio, our community development director, approached me and said that we could submit our deed money that we had gotten from deed back in, I believe, 2012 or something like that, 2013. That was for revolving loan funds when the flood came through. When the flood came through, they gave us some money that we're able to give out loans to businesses in order for them to basically re-establish their business without having to take out a huge amount of loan, and it's, it was a small interest loan that we were able to get. We were able to keep the interest, and we just had to keep the amount of dollars that we had for principal that we got from deed in a fund, in a separate fund. So when I could believe April or May, Sam approached me and said, "We could cut a check for the same amount of dollars that we had." And again, so the city of La Sueur put some money into that fund as well. Majority of it came from the city of La Sueur. And then we added those dollars to the deed money, and we weren't, we weren't able to do anything, and then the state tracked all those dollars that we gave, the city of La Sueur's and deed money. We weren't able to do anything else besides give loans with it. So we were, our hands were kind of held with what we could do with it. When Sam approached me and said, "We can give the money back to deed of what we, what we got from them, and it then frees up and unrestricted those dollars to do whatever we'd like with those." Cause again, it's La Sueur money that was invested to begin with, but it was locked with deed requirements. It's kind of like having a certain type of loan through a home loan or something. You have to meet these X, Y, Z requirements for you to able to have to use your money for the mortgage or whatever else, or a reconstruction loan or whatever else. So with that money given back to the state, we were able to free up those dollars to do facade projects with downtown and improve the city of La Sueur through grants and other loan programs that we can implement through the city that aren't as restrictive as deed is. So it's been a great help.
Yeah, I'll just add that basically that money is unrestricted now. It was restricted, and we can only use it for certain things, and the EDA manages that, that fund.
Correct.
So.
And by returning this money, it increases our position to go back to deed for additional funds should we need to.
Exactly, yep. So we're able to use our, the full dollars that we have unrestricted to go get more dollars if we need to in the future, so.
Thank you.
It was a great, great move. Okay, I'll move past, was it page 10 that we got the water fund at? 11 was the sewer fund, again, that has to relate to, as the water fund goes up and has more usage, we see increased revenues in the sewer fund, as council member Johnson had pointed out, that anything in the sewer fund is related to usage in the water fund. So I don't have anything else. Major salaries and benefits is probably the biggest thing that has changed. We've been able to allocate a lot more time to MRF-PUC, which is actually probably what's used more. I don't know if you want to go back one slide?
What is MRF-PUC?
Minnesota Route, Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission.
I know, I just want to make sure that we explain our acronyms for the benefit of our listeners.
Correct, yep, so that's the wastewater plant down in downtown here. So with allocating more dollars to MRF-PUC, we're able to save more dollars of the city and charge that back to MRF-PUC itself, so. Excuse me, it's been a great help with being able to allocate that time better. I think our new system that we have with using AM workforce solutions, we're able to better code our time, better allocate our time. I know Jasper's big initiative was to get our time better tracked and actually where we're using it, so we're able to charge the full amount of dollars back to MRF-PUC that we actually use versus absorbing it through the city.
Excuse me, does everybody understand what he's talking about? There were resources that MRF-PUC was using that were city resources, but over the years hadn't been paying the city for the use of them. And when going through and working with Jasper and working with the city through MRF-PUC, Jasper had come back and said, "You know, you guys aren't paying for this, you're not paying for this, you're not paying for this, and the city's hurting over that." So when the budget was put together for MRF-PUC, knowing all of this, it was, our budget for 2018 was altered in 2017 to be able to make up for these funds, which makes it better for the city.
Correct.
Thank you for that explanation, council member Fabulous. Council member Fabulous is our chairperson for MRF-PUC, so he's very much in tune with all the, everything that has anything to do with MRF-PUC. He's our resident expert, so thank you for that explanation. Is there anything else, Zach?
Now with the sewer fund, at the current moment, we're in a really good position, so I think it's been much better. That's helped a lot.
Very glad to be where we are now.
Correct. Don't want to be where we were in the past, I'll be honest.
I'll go ahead and accept the motion, none to receive the 2018 second quarter financial report on behalf of the city of La Sueur.
So moved.
I stand corrected, were you gonna go ahead and talk about the community center?
I can, yeah.
Yeah, council member Johnson would like a quick refund on the community center.
Sure. I stand for questions, if you have any. Do you want, did you want to just explain number one, basically, the one explanation that I have on the thing?
Yep.
Okay, so with the community center, we take in money at the community center for community education projects or community education items, so if they're doing kids' club, or we're doing some event for the school district or something up at the community center, we'll take in dollars for those, and then our, we will cut a check to the school district for the amount of dollars that we receive in, so it's just a pass-through. We've got the money from everyone who comes in and uses the community center for community education items, then we give the money back to the school district for those because those are their activities. That activity has been higher than what we've budgeted for. We use, I use a dollar amount that was probably from two years ago, based on how much usage was, which I used a $200,000 amount for how much usage. Again, that's 100% offset with revenues, so if you look for charges for services, that's where the income is. So the income's in charges for services and the out is in the other services and charges line item. So the reason why the charges for services number isn't way off a whack is because that, that those budget numbers are close, and then there's actually a little bit less dollars in ice time revenue and stuff like that, because ice has only been, was only available for three or four months in the beginning of the year, and that's a significant amount of money that the community center has. So because that's lower than budget, and then the money that we got from the community center is higher than budget, it nets out to be close enough on the revenue side, but the expense that we don't have a direct revenue or direct expenses with ice time, it's just salaries and benefits or supplies. So because we don't have those direct numbers there, but they're in the other charges and services for the community education aspect or the school district side, that's why you're seeing a variance there. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a great question, thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I go ahead and get a rescinding on the motion and seconding of the receiving of the second quarter, and then we'll go ahead and do it the proper way, please? I believe you made the motion and council member Roloff seconded.
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion? I'm sorry, would you go ahead and rescind your motion?
Yes.
And who seconded over here?
I worked it.
Okay, council member Huntington? Okay, now, can we go ahead and get a motion to receive the 2018 second quarter financial report on behalf of the city of La Sueur?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next item on the docket is seven Bravo, which is the MVRT, which is the Minnesota River Valley Transit 2017 audit report.
Mayor Hank, members of the city council, we will keep Zach here a little longer just to give a brief overview of the MRVT audit. This is the first year that MRVT has received an audit, and then Zach can talk about the reasons why, and it's related to revenues. So with that, I'll turn it over to Zach.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council for having me tonight to explain MRVT audit. I'm going to be very short and brief because it's a very simple audit. It, it only has to relate to the Minnesota River Valley Transit Authority. The reason we have to have a separate audit this year, which we did not have in the past, was always presented with our regular financial statements that we got from Bergen KTV, which we accepted back in June, is because of the amount of money that we collect now. Because our grant went over $450,000, and our amount of total revenues that we received from transit operations with the combined city of La Sueur and St. Peter is now more than, more than that $450,000 revenue amount, we have to then have a separate audit per OSA standards. And OSA is the Office of the State Auditor that we... Sets the standards for those. So because they set the standard for $450,000 of revenue, we have to then have a separate audit. Again, we didn't ask Bergen KTV to come down here because it's such a simple report. The only, the only one I'm gonna show you is the statement of net position, which is on page five of the actual financial statements itself. It looks just like this. I wish I could show you closer, but it just has the, basically, all the assets and liabilities together in one line item there. Page five of the financial statements. And I'm just gonna go through each one of them and kind of show what those are. Again, we got an unmodified or cleaned opinion from the auditors on this, which basically is the best opinion we can get from the auditors on this. They had no comments, questions, concerns. They've audited in the past, just not in, as in-depth as they had this, to this year with the OSA standards. The one item to note is we had some due from other governments, amount of $252,718. What those are, what, those are grant dollars that we have not received. Part of the grant we had this year from MRVT was part federal, and the federal funding takes forever to come in. It takes six to nine months later than what the state gives us, so I just, I just finally received, I think, the last payment for 2017, and I think it was last month. So it takes a long time for the federal funds to come through, but because that grant is part federally funded, that is most of the $252,000. I think it's about $190,000 of that 252, so. The remainder is just the last payment that we got from the state. They always hold back dollars at the end of the year based on our expenses, and then they give us the rest after we have those expenses incurred. So those dollars came in afterwards, but that also caused our cash overdraft. If you go into liabilities, the first item, $28,468, we had a cash overdraft at the end of the year. That does not mean we don't have, it means we have no cash in MRVT, but because they utilize the funds of the city overall and the one pooled cash fund that we have, they just pulled from another fund the negative $28,000. Again, we're in a good position right now because we have that $252,000 of revenue that we have not received, so in total net position, we're good. It's just it looks really bad when you have $28,000 negative cash, just based on timing. Other than that, there wasn't any major comments that they had from us. They, no comments on, no questions procedures-wise. They said everything's going well. So far, working with St. Peter's been, been great. They've been able to answer the questions that they have. It's, it's nice to have another set of eyes on, on the operations side of it from just their perspective, since they've been running a transit just as long as we have. I know we have a couple board members, obviously, there's two board members from this council and two board members from the city of St. Peter, council as well on that board, so. I stand for any questions with the MRVT audit, otherwise it was clean and no, no comments.
Any questions for Zach regarding the MVRT audit? Council member Huntington as our senior member from the city of La Sueur on MVRT. What do they have to offer?
No. Am I reading this right?
Am I reading this right?
Which part?
That accounts receivable on that has been $17,426.
You got it. So that's from payments from the state. If we invoice the county for any tickets or transit books, that can also be, we have a contract with Gustavus, see if St. Peter does, which is obviously MRVT now, they have a contract with Gustavus, and based on their amount of money that they pay us, based on usage of a bus, they have a set contract that they give us, so that can be part of that $17,000 as well. I'm not sure on the exact detail behind it, but it can be a large amount based on the usage just from Gustavus alone, that contract's like $40,000, $45,000 a year?
That's what I thought it was going to be.
Okay. Correct.
Thank you.
Added too.
Any additional questions? If not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then to receive the 2018 second quarter financial report for
No.
MVRT.
Financial audit, hold on.
Financial audit.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional questions, concerns, thoughts? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much for your time and for your good work, Zach. We now move on to line item seven Charlie, which is the MediaCom franchise agreement, the first reading.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, we had a, a work session that I thought was very good. We had Brian Grogan, the attorney that's been working on this for over a year, come in and explain a lot of key features about our franchise agreement. After that meeting, the direction that was received was to go back to MediaCom, insert a clause into the, the franchise agreement that allowed city council to, at a certain length of time, with, with a certain length of time notice, reduce the, either the franchise fee or the PEG.
What was PEG, please?
Public Education.
Public Education Government Fund, and that, that fund can go towards capital costs. So the, the key components of the franchise agreement that, that we should discuss are, essentially, there's, there will be a 5% franchise fee, and that's what it has been since, I believe, 2001. This can be lowered at any time with a 90-day notice to MediaCom, or raised is, is what's in there as well. So if we want to adjust it, we can adjust it.
We can't exceed 5%.
But we cannot exceed 5%. So if we would lower it to 2.5% and then say, well, we, we should really have it at 3, we can, we have the ability to do that. Same with the PEG subscriber fee of 85 cents per subscriber per month, that can be also lowered with a 90-day notice. So as a reminder, the PEG revenues can only be used for capital costs associated with programming, production, cameras, microphones, software, hardware, things of that nature, so. This franchise agreement is a 10-year term, and we will have one PEG channel. We will have an HD option after July of 2019. So just to recap, this is also, anybody that provides video service within our community needs to have a franchise agreement. It's the city's prerogative to attach a franchise fee to that, and that franchise fee can be allocated for any city function, there is no restriction on that. What we're looking at doing is evaluating what we want to do with a potential PEG channel, how we want to program it, what those costs could be, and we'll likely do that in the 2019 budget. So there, there will likely be a line item of some sort associated with the PEG cost because that can only be capital, so you might see a, an item in the capital improvement plan for 2019 with some PEG costs. Just in general, we probably won't have an allocated item or a specific item, but it will be in there. The costs that we received for revenue, I checked into this, for the franchise fee in 2017 was just under $37,500. And if, if you remember from the discussion, we can kind of think, I think we can plan for that to be the high point, and that will likely start decreasing over the term of the franchise agreement. So if we reduce the franchise fee, obviously, that number will go down proportionally, and we can, we can allocate those funds likely for programming or anything else that, that the, that the council wants. So what we're looking for, I'll entertain any questions. We do have Todd Corial in attendance as well, who has worked closely with, with the attorney on this. And we can answer any questions. What we're looking for is to conduct or waive the first reading, I would recommend waiving it, it's a, it's a large document, and then directing us to publish in the paper the public notice, and what we have is, in the, in the public notice, there's an executive summary, so we don't publish the entire document. We publish that, and the entire document is, is the ordinance itself. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
City Administrator Krugel, I have a concern, or not a concern, but in addition to what Councilmember Krogman stated regarding the 5%, that is the maximum allowed by federal law, correct?
That is correct.
And then secondly, my question would be, as a city, do we plan on having the franchise fee monies separate from the PEG monies in our budget?
Yes, yep.
I have a question, perhaps spelling. It says hearing in preparation, the second. Could you tell me what that next word is supposed to be? Reading.
Mayor Hag.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Jasper, I got a quick question. In our meeting minutes from last meeting, we did already waive the first reading on this agreement, on this franchise agreement, as noted in our minutes.
At the work session.
Okay.
No, in the meeting last.
At the last meeting, yeah, July 23rd.
And, and I did notice that, it's because we have changed it
Okay.
and we haven't publicly noticed it for a hearing, I think we just, it'd be prudent to do the first hear, first reading again after the direction that we got, so.
Because of the changes, yeah, making it more transparent.
And, and after that first meeting where we, where we technically waived the first reading, there were some questions that I thought we should address before we, we proceed, so.
I just wanted to know it, so that way if anybody ever asked why we did it twice.
Very good.
Good catch.
Any additional questions?
I have a comment.
Councilmember Krogman.
When we do a thing like this and we change something, it would be very helpful to highlight it in some way, so we're not looking through a whole document to see what was changed.
Good point.
Either, in some way, indicate in the document what was changed. Secondly, is the existing, the second page, it's page number two, numbered page, existing franchise versus, or V, new franchise, is that part of the executive summary?
I believe so.
Okay.
That, that's what I've received from Brian. Todd could comment on that. I believe that's what will be in the, in the public notice.
Is that correct, City Attorney Corial?
One side, let me look.
Okay.
What's this thing? Yeah, this whole thing. Yeah, it's my understanding that's part of that publication.
I would recommend or request a change to it under PEG
Okay.
because buried within all the language is a two-year increase possible. In fact, it's not only possible, it's going to happen. What it says is, I couldn't believe it's pegged to this, that's, I didn't mean it that way, that's, that was not intentional. It's keyed to a consumer price index for Minneapolis of all places, okay? Let that go, I'm not going to sweat that one. But it's either that or 3%, which is ever higher, that PEG fee would automatically go up, and we should state that in some way.
Would you like to come up with the language for how it should read?
No, but I will.
Okay, please.
You want me to do that on the spot, or can we just put that later?
We can, we can, we can put that away for the time being and make sure that we have it correct. Okay, so, Councilmember Johnson?
I don't have a question on the document or the agreement, I do have a question that we've kind of, I asked last time, and we kind of talked about a little bit, and that, how, how is that cable vision channel going to be administered? Who's going to do the programming? How is this actually going to work beyond the regular cable channels and the local one? How is that going to be managed? And then we, we can get to that later, because it doesn't really, that's not specified in the agreement, but I didn't want to let that go.
That's correct, yeah, that's a good point. City Administrator Krugel?
I can talk about that for a brief, brief bit. We will incorporate whatever the Personnel and Budget Committee wants to recommend into the budget for this. Likely, there'll be an open item, one for capital costs associated with PEG revenue, and then the revenue from the, from the actual franchise fee will determine what level of service we want to provide, and I can start looking at what that means as far as personnel, and if we have one staff expertise to actually do it, that's one aspect, and if we have time available as well, because in my mind, I'm thinking maybe 20 hours a month, 40 hours a month, something like that. Once we get everything established, would be sufficient. I'd love to see meetings like Planning Commission, EDA, on broadcast on the channel, I think that would be, that would be great, but right now, we don't have it, we're not recording Planning Commission meetings regularly, we're not recording EDA meetings regularly, just because there isn't staff to do that. So that'll be something that we'll look at as far as incorporating into existing staff, or if it's something that we want to, want to look at doing like a part-time individual for.
But regarding anything we do from an operational point of view, it has nothing to do with the first and second reading of this, we can actually go ahead and take care of that and work out the logistics at a, at a later date.
Yes, that would be recommended.
Okay, with that said, is there any additional questions? Go ahead and entertain a motion then to waive the first reading of the MediaCom franchise agreement and direct staff to publish the notice for the public hearing in preparation of the second reading of the ordinance on August 27th, 2018.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. And I now move on to line item seven Delta, which is the water meter policy. City Administrator Krugel?
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, this is coming back to council. Normally, the Public Services Director would present this, but he is somewhere on vacation in, I believe, southern Minnesota, so I will, I will take this over. And there's just some clarifications that we, that we went over at the last meeting. So one, if a meter is between 98% and 100%, 102% accurate, that's what we deem as being, declaring it accurate, so that's following the American Water Works Association standards. The second stipulation is if the meter is tested and it's determined to be over-reporting, so let's say somebody, it, it comes in at 105%, the meet, the customer's bill will be adjusted back to one month, so we'll go back one month, and a new meter will be installed, and the $150 deposit will be returned to the customer. So, you know, bringing it to our attention, there's no, there's, there's, there's nothing that, no harm done to the, to the resident by bringing it to our attention. They, they, they come out, they get a new meter. I had a good conversation with Councilmember Sullivan about this. It's very rare to get a meter that over reports. They, they typically slow down the mechanical functions of them, slow down as they age, so they start under-reporting, but it's not that it hasn't ever happened, so it's good that we have a, a policy for it. And then the third stipulation, and I want to make sure that this was misrepresented in the memo, I want to clarify it here, that is, if the meter is tested and is determined to be under-reporting, so that means that a resident is paying less than what they should be, a new meter will be installed, and the $150 deposit will be kept by the city to cover the cost of testing and staff time. So the Public Services Director went into detail about some of those costs associated with mailing in a meter, getting it professionally tested, certified, coming back, the cost of removing the meter, reinstalling the meter, that's that, what that $150 deposit goes towards. That's all I have as far as the meter policy goes. If there are any questions, I'll entertain those at this time.
To be clear, Mr. City Administrator, you sort of glossed over it, you said it correctly, but sir, I understand, there is no adjustment in situation number three in the memo.
Correct.
In number one in the memo, you may have stated it here in your talk, but it doesn't say that the $150 fee is kept for the administrative and the testing cost, but that's what happens in number one, right? Even if it's accurate?
Even if it's accurate, yes, yep. So if it comes back and it's accurate, the, the city takes those costs similar to what number three would be. So that 100, the $150 would only be returned if the meter is over-reporting.
And $150 is for staff time and meter testing, yeah?
Yep. Pulling the meter out of the house, mailing it to a certified facility, having the facility certify it, mail it back to us, and then reinstall it, and all the other staff time associated with it, with the utility billing.
So if it's only returned if the meter over-reports, and the likelihood that it's going to over-report is, is rare, then I think the public should probably know that, so they don't, they think twice about investing $150 in something that's a long shot.
Yeah, you know, and we'll be clear, this isn't something that I think we'll just get an application for without them having a conversation with city staff beforehand to try to work out what problems they may have. With the meter swap-out, we've had people come in thinking that we are overcharging them, and that's likely because the meters previously were aged to the point where they were under-reporting, and now we have a meter that's more accurate, that's, you know, your bill went up because of it being accurate and not under-reporting.
I think on behalf of all of us on city council, we've all feel very comfortable that when that opportunity presents itself, that our city staff make itself available to have that discussion with the residents, so they know thoroughly what, what's all involved, because there's a lot to digest here, and we want to make sure that nobody thinks that we're trying to take advantage. Councilmember Sullivan?
Just one quick question for you, Jasper, and you and me talked about it this afternoon, but how did we go from a $300 fee last meeting to a $150 fee this meeting?
So we essentially tightened it up a little bit, just to include the actual administrative costs and the tighten, and the, and the testing costs. The $300, the idea would be if they were, if we were over-reporting, or sorry, under-reporting, that $300, that additional 150 would go towards the bill to cover some of those costs. I think we can go and, and say, well, if we've been under-reporting, that's on the city to make sure that their meter is reporting correctly. You shouldn't be penalized for bringing it to our attention, so that's why that has been removed and adjusted.
I would also note, Councilmember Johnson, that the form on the reverse side of the memo, there is a place where the citizen would request such a testing of the meter, and it's very clear there what the rules are. They have to sign something that indicates that, so I, I compliment the staff for coming up with a way to be clear for people, so.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and recommend that the city council approve the water meter policy as presented in the enclosed attachments.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, you just said you recommend, I think you, you were looking for someone to recommend, to be clear for the public. Not that you may not.
Looking for somebody to recommend. Thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to line item seven, that was the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, or what we call the RPAC appointment.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, we currently have a vacancy on RPAC, as Mayor Hag indicated, the Recreation and Park Advisory Committee. We do have a applicant in queue. If you remember, we had six applicants when we initially reviewed this. I have reached out to Steve Randolph and had a conversation with him. He has indicated he still has interest in becoming a member of RPAC. He indicated he's neighbors with Robin Wilkie, and has talked to her about it as well, so he's still interested in it. So I have attached his redacted application again in the packet. Staff recommends appointing Steve Randolph to the RPAC board, filling this vacancy, and just, the, the person that was previously in this seat had a term that expired on 12/31/2020. So I just wanted to make sure that that, they would be filling that role, and they would have that term expiration date. Also, I'll just make a little note about RPAC, we had our first meeting on the 7th of August, it went well. Judith Jones is the chair, and then Ethan Steiger is the vice chair. We, they decided to have a meeting earlier than what was planned, there will be another RPAC meeting here in city council, the city council chambers on August 21st at 5:00 PM. We can put it on that day, and I'll put a little, a little advertisement, we do have a charter commission meeting on the 20th at, I believe, 5:00 PM as well, so lots of meetings. But yeah, with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have about this recommendation. But yeah, with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have about this recommendation. The options that you have is we could go out and advertise for filling this position, have it open for a certain period of time. Personally, I would like to have a full board to be able to look at some of the budget items we're going to be talking about. My conversation with Steve went very, very well on the phone, and I think he'll, he'll do a good job of filling in that role.
And I think if I recall, and we actually sat down and had this discussion regarding the RPAC members before, the one thing that we, we all thought was probably a hindrance at that time was the year and a half that he currently was here as opposed to the 55 years that he had been here before, where the other members were certainly here for a much longer time recently. So everybody's had now opportunity to go ahead and take a look at the commission application. Any questions or concerns for our city administrator? Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then to appoint Steve Randolph to the RPAC, or no, better known as the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to line item seven Foxtrot, which is the Minnesota Mutual Power Association Bond Rating Upgrade. As you can see, we call it MMPA for short.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, I'll just correct you quickly. It's Minnesota Municipal Power Association.
I stand.
Agency.
Agency. Sorry. We have a lot of, I did that on purpose. No, so we do have a lot of acronyms here, and this is essentially just to give the city council, as we're a member of this group, just kind of a financial report on what their bond rating is. So they, as you can see, we receive official statements from MMPA because there's a confidentiality agreement between the member cities and the two members, which, for everybody's knowledge, Newell is the official appointed individual to the MMPA board, and I am the, the alternate. We make sure that we cover the board meetings. I don't think we've missed one since Newell started, you know, either him or I. Most, most of the time, it's him and, him and I there. There's been a few times where we've covered for each other, but in general, it's, it's worked really well. So, you know, as you can see, the bond rating upgrade there from both the reporting agencies, their bond rating has increased, you know, and we, we can't really talk too much about, about logistics of it, but it's a good thing. They're, they're in a great position to be in right now, or we are, because we're part of the group. But if they would ever need to go out and bond, these bond ratings would help them get a very competitive rate. I will turn it over to Noel Krogman, as he's got a few other things he would like to, to fill in for the board.
One of the ironic pieces of this is that the less, fewer bonds you have, in a way, the better you are paying them, the better your rating. So we are, we're a member of this group, this agency. We're one of 12 communities that are part of it. One of them, Elk River, will begin on October 1st, actually receiving power, commonly called load, from the agency. Right now, they do not do that. But we're very strong financially, as this report indicates, and I'm going to highlight some things. One of the issues we have is because it's a business operation, we have to be careful with disclosing our strategies and the way we operate for competitive reasons. But the Fitch Report outlines a lot of things that I will highlight for you, I think, that will make you understand better and be, I hope, comfortable with what's, what's happening. First of all, we have here, I'm going to, I'm going to read to you from the middle of the first page of the Fitch Report. Leverage expected to continue improving. The upgrade also reflects Fitch's expectation, the revamped resource strategy, which I'll explain later, will result in a decline in leverage with approximately 50 million of debt amid five years. No new debt and more muted rate increases than previously projected. Translated, we're not going to be out, we're not going to be out sending, building a new plant somewhere, which costs millions of dollars. And later in the report, and actually in the annual report, which is public knowledge, we are going to be purchasing power from Manitoba Electric in Manitoba, Canada, which is a renewable resource. And that means very little infrastructure for us. You have to have transmission lines, but we already have that access. So that's one reason it's, it's good news. The next thing is that we have the 11 cities, and as I indicated, the 12th member comes into buying power in October of 2018. Then we go to solid finances on the bottom of page one. The agency maintains average wholesale power rates to members, a number is stated, that are comparable or below neighboring investor-owned municipal and cooperative utilities. We generally, in fact, I have, can't recall any time that we have not equaled, but normally undersold or charged less for wholesale than any other agency in the area. So we are very, very, very competitive, and we're, it's very good for our citizens. That's the key. Finally, on the back of the second page, second to last paragraph, MMPA has sufficient capacity to meet member load. We have a new facility in Shakopee called Shakopee Energy Park. It's a 46-megawatt quick-start natural gas-fired plant, which gives us tremendous capacity that we don't need to use at all times, but we have it. So the other thing to note is that by 2020, MMPA expects that roughly 60%, that's six zero percent of its energy will come from renewable resources. If I recall right, by 2025, we're supposed to be at 25 for the state. So we are going to well exceed that by 2020. So it's, it's good news in both the Fitch and the Moody's reports that indicate that we're a part of an agency that is doing well. One of the things we're trying to do in this agency is be flexible and yet provide the best power resource at the best cost we can. I would also want to note one other thing, and I can't remember what it was, but we have, this, this agency is ours. We're a part of it. The other thing I was going to tell you is we are a member of this until 2040, 2040. Some other members go until 2050. It's just a matter of timing, I believe, when you join. But it would appear that we're in a, a very stable situation with them as far as providing the needs of our citizens for electrical power. I won't go into any detail, but you can imagine that in these board meetings, we talk a lot about what the needs for power will be in the future. If you haven't heard the words electric cars, you might want to start thinking about that, for example.
Okay.
Councilmember Krogman, I have a question for you in regards to the leverage expected to continue improving.
Yep.
Paragraph. When it states more muted rate increases than previously projected, do we have a crystal ball in regards to what that's going to mean for our constituency out here?
We, next year, we know, I'm going to let Jasper explain this. Let me explain something. There's such a thing as what they will tell you the rate increase will be, but then you adjust it for inflation. Okay. But Jasper can speak to it. Our rates will go down next year. Let's put it that way.
They'll go down, that's true, but when you factor in inflation, there will be roughly a 1% increase, so.
So what do they use? They use the CPI Midwest, or they use the Minneapolis Cola then to determine the rate and, the potential rate increase for coal?
I don't think it's, I'm not sure I can answer it correctly, except to say, I don't think those factor any way whatsoever.
Perfect.
It's a matter of what they expect it will cost us to produce the power.
Correct. Yep, yep. They don't use a formal CPI.
No, there's no automatic adjustment.
It didn't fall onto anything in particular then.
By the way, that 1% increase is less than what we've had in the past, if I recall correctly, so.
Correct, yes. So it, it's a good thing, and, and in my opinion, MMPA, City of La Sure is, we're in a good financial position with them. The, the management of that group is, is very well-suited for what they do.
One of the things that helps, it's noted in one of the reports, is there are three large communities that, that buy about 70% of the power. So we're a part of that, and we get the benefit of that, having a lot of power produced, which gives you some efficiency. And of course, in management, you have to have people to manage this to be able to operate equipment. So we're very fortunate, I think, to be a part of this.
Okay. Any additional questions or concerns for either our city administrator or Councilmember Krogman?
I have nothing.
On behalf of the city council, I'd like to go ahead and extend our appreciation for the two of you attending these meetings and bringing all this information to light, not only for us, but also for our residents. And we have no action required of this. We're just going to be receiving the report, which we did, and thank you very much for all the information. We now move on to our comments, reports, and items of appreciation. And typically, what we do for this portion is we kind of go around the table and get a chance to find out who attended what meetings and what was discussed at those meetings and different things that are coming up within the City of La Sure. So with that said, Councilmember Krogman, you've done such a wonderful job speaking tonight. I think we'll go ahead and continue and let you start it off tonight, please.
Thank you, sir. First of all, each member of the council has been provided with the MMPA's annual report covering through December of last year. This was reviewed at a meeting in July, and some members of our staff, who particularly those who work with electrical power, were present. But this report is available to members of the public. We have some additional copies in the, in the office here at the city hall. I also attended, now we're going to get into acronyms again, I got to get my brain straight around this. I had the other one right in front of me. I attended the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, commonly called CGMC Annual Conference, Summer Conference in Mankato a little over a week ago. Couple of things, first of all, I, I don't like to, so to speak, counsel my fellow council members, except to say, we all need to pay attention to what legislation has happened, what our legislators are doing. There was an extensive review of the, the work of the session that ended this year in May, and some good things happened and some bad things happened. One of the things that's happened, it's, it's a strange thing. We have a law in Minnesota that you cannot combine bills, and yet we had a 1,000-page bill that went before the legislature with all kinds of things thrown in. They've been getting away with it for years, and anything we can do to urge our legislators to deal with one issue at a time would be very beneficial to us, because sometimes things that we want get buried in a big bill, and when it's in a big bill, people will vote no, because there's things in there they don't like. Quite frankly, our executive director of the coalition, Brad Peterson, entitled his, his talk that he presented, Session 2018, The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly. Okay? And it was. There's the good, the bad, and the ugly. I'm not going to go into any details, except to say, it's something that we need to pay attention to, and our voice is really both ours and through this coalition, so we need to be a part of it and, and to work at it. Brad, Jasper, I apologize. I meant to check with you earlier. I don't recall what our annual cost is to be a member. Do you, off the top of your head, have a general idea, or could you look it up very quickly as I speak?
Just happened to get into bill today.
Yeah, it, it'll be a 2% increase. We voted, I'm a representative, so I was one of the people that was able to vote, and the vote was to increase by 2%. It's still not very much relatively.
Yeah, so I can, I can speak on that. The proposed general dues assessment for 2019 is $6,874. And then also, there's the environmental fund voluntary assessment that we did this year, I mean, for 2018, and that would be $1,419.
But that's voluntary.
That's voluntary, yep, and we'll look at that. We'll, we'll look at this part, it'll be approved in 2019, likely, one of the first meetings that we have, so, or we'll evaluate it at that time.
And we did participate in that fund last year. That, for example, with MRFPUK is how we get some representation. One of the things that passed last year was a, a protection for those that improve their wastewater facilities, and they then have a guarantee that they won't be changed, permitting won't change on them for a number of years, which protects, protects smaller communities particularly, but all of us. Okay. I'm going to give you a couple of other things. There was a session on economic development. Just for highlights for you, there are three areas that are critically important. Housing, childcare, and internet access. And there's a synergy of these three that indicate what your business climate is. So as we look to our planning for the future, we want to keep those things in mind.
What were those three again, please?
Sure. Housing, childcare, and internet access.
Thank you.
Kevin Lindsay spoke. He's a, the commissioner for the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. This talk was about community engagement, and I'm going to give you some quick shots as to what he said. I think it's critical for us as we look at our comp plan, our downtown master plan, and other things we do with the community to get them involved. First of all, we should be having all community organizations incorporated within policymaking decisions, or making policy, that is. We need to figure out what metrics we can use to determine the success of civic engagement. If we're going to have civic engagement, how are we going to measure how successful it is? Are our meetings held in a manner to maximize participation? To give you an absurd example, if you hold one at 7 o'clock in the morning, you're probably not going to get a whole lot of people. But, you know, are we doing this in a way that, that we get maximum participation? And do people know how to participate in the policymaking process? Okay? These are just some tips that he gave us. He, he went on at length about it, so. I'm going to leave it at that. It was a, I think, an interesting conference to attend. I've given some feedback to the city administrator on some particularly detailed matters. But a couple of other highlights, here's a surprise for you all. We're having trouble in Minnesota recruiting wastewater operators. Okay? Seriously. So anything we can do to attract the right people and to treat them properly is very important. One of the points that was made in, in, in one of the presentations was that we often spend a lot of time recruiting employees at all different levels within a city administration, but we don't do well at retaining them. So we need to concentrate on how we are handling our employees. Are we even simply complimenting them for the good work that they do? So it was, I think it was helpful. I, I mentioned to Jasper, our city administrator, that some of the stuff that was there was, frankly, sort of, I didn't say it to him this way, but it was, it wasn't in my wheelhouse. It wasn't my responsibility. But there's good information that they provide on labor, and Jasper has a great resource to go to, as would Stacy, for anything involving personnel matters at this coalition. So we're very well-served by it. Our past mayor, of course, was the president of it last year. He showed up there this time because they had some pictures afterwards, and I saw his picture. I did see him there. But it's good to know that we have that type of connection here and that we can participate. So thank you.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and thank you for taking your time to go to the CGMC Annual Summer Conference, and I'd like to go ahead and extend an invitation to everybody on city council that when we have these throughout the course of the year, please think about going, because for those of us that have attended these types of things in the past, it's very educational, very rewarding to go ahead and network with our fellow city council members, and to also be able to have the latest scoop on what's going on so we can report back to our citizenry.
If I, Mr. Mayor, I forgot to say, I also had the city administrator provide to each of you a packet of information on things that happened last year at the legislature and things they're looking forward to.
That's correct.
So that you all can see those. I, I wouldn't expect that we're all going to be expert in those, but we do have an opportunity and occasion to meet with our representatives, with our state senator, and some staff people sometimes, so we want to make sure we're versed in these things.
Did they happen to say anything about what the future of LGA looks like for 2019?
No, not, not necessarily. They're hoping to maintain it. They're hoping, again, to, to get it increased. I don't think there's any, no one made a prediction at this point that I recall.
Thank you.
I can, I can touch on that. So the LGA for 2019 has been set and adopted, so we know what we're going to get. I believe it's a little under $2,000 more than we got this year, I want to say. This year, we got $975,000. We're looking at $977 roughly next year. So those numbers have been submitted, they are approved, that's what we can budget for, put into our budget, and we have incorporated that number into our budget. So the numbers for 2020, that's when they'll, they could potentially change again, and that's when we have to be active lobbying, talking to people about how important LGA is.
And now's the time to start doing this.
Yes.
Exactly. Councilmember Johnson?
Just a follow-up question in regard to Newell's promoting us getting tuned in and involved in the legislative process, and how do we do that? How's that going to happen?
Dave, that's a good question. I, I think the first thing is to, I will get information from the coalition, Jasper will, you will. And I, I'm not being funny about this, and I don't put anybody down, I hope. We need to pay attention to that, okay? Because you never know when the opportunity will come to be able to speak to it. When someone comes to you from the coalition, or if I were to do that and say, would you please write to a person in the legislature? Do it. You don't have to be real fancy about it. You don't have to be real fancy about it. I can tell you, I got one response, I sent in two different issues, and I got the same answer from somebody. It was like milquetoast, quite frankly. Okay? That's going to happen, but the more you send, the more we get to them, the more their staff is aware of it, quite frankly, and that's what we have to do. There was a debate held at this conference among the gubernatorial candidates, all but one, actually, all but two were able to be there, or I shouldn't say that, were there. I won't go into specifics then, but even then, just paying attention to things like that, that was streamed. And I happened to decide not to stay in Mankato that night, but I came home and got out of my lazy chair at 7:30 and watched it. It was kind of irritating, because it's when they stream it, their mouth doesn't coordinate with the sound, you know? It drives you absolutely batty, so you just don't look at it after a while. But the bottom line is, I think we just have to pay attention to it. And frankly, we need to work as a council on our strategy, so that we are representing to our representatives and our senators. By the way, it's not only ours, Councilmember Roloff does some transportation work, and he's walking the halls, talking to all kinds of people that aren't our people, they're not our elected officials, but that's how we have to operate. It's not usually what we do, it's not our normal way, but we can do it. In fact, they appreciate, I think, hearing from people who aren't the professionals sometimes. We can always send a lobbyist, we can send Brad Peterson, the president of the Coalition, but they like to hear from us, so.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Roloff.
If I may add, Newell touched on this, so you should be receiving a couple emails every week, one CGMC in brief, just take a look at it. Okay, so we'll get Marvin on that email list, but you should be receiving those, look at those, just give them a glance, and if there's anything in particular that you should be aware of, they usually put it at the top of the list. Same with, there's an LMC, a League of Minnesota Cities, email list as well, so we'll get Marvin on that one as well. But just keep an eye on those, those will give you, those are good touchpoints to see what's going on. I utilize them, because there's a lot of moving parts with that aspect, so they're usually on it, that's what we pay these dues for, for both CGMC and LMC, for them to, you know, fight the fight for us, in a sense, but there will be a time where, you know, citizens, city council members, will have the opportunity to help form legislation for our city. And, you know, we're not going to be shy about asking or talking about it, but, you know, it's a big component, and we don't want to be left behind. So I just wanted to make a note, I will make a note to get Marvin on that list.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Roloff.
I was able to attend the MMPA annual dinner, and I was able to learn a lot of new things, and was able to see where they are going down the road.
Okay. Did you enjoy the meal, too?
Yes, I did, yep.
Good deal. And that was up there in Ostega?
Yes.
Otzwego, I should say, Otzwego. Yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, Councilmember Huntington.
Let's see. Well, my MRVT is not meeting next month, my HRA board meets next Wednesday, and I'll be yielding my time on the MRF PUC meeting to my chairman over there. But I'd like to just say, as part of the community, as well as to say thank you to the community, the chamber, and all those involved in Giant Celebration, it was a great time again this year, and I always look forward to it every year, so I just wanted to say thanks to people in the community for that. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Johnson.
I guess I'd like to, while the iron's hot, so to speak, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Planning Commission hearing. I know that Jasper has scheduled a work session for all of us on the next Wednesday, the 22nd, correct?
That is correct. I have gotten confirmation from the city attorney that everything will work out, I think that'll be the 22nd at 6:00 PM.
So I'll leave it to Jasper, hopefully, to talk about that, and what that work session is about, but part of that is a follow-up to the Planning Commission recommendation. Just to build on what Newell started out talking about, the three main emphasis for that came out of your conference, housing was the number one, and the Planning Commission hearing, obviously, was about housing, rental housing in particular. And I'd like to just make a couple comments, because the, it's very much, at least on our council's mind and the citizens' mind right now, and I'd like to make some constructive comments about this, and I've been trying to do that with Greg, Mayor Hague, and our city administrator Jasper, and Scott Schudter called me, a couple of other people called me after the hearing, a number of us were present at the hearing and absorbed it, and just a couple comments. One, I thought that the citizens, the first part of the hearing was very well-done by the citizens. I think that they'd done a lot of homework, and thinking, and networking, and talking, and concentrating, and looking at resources, and did a very fine job of addressing things out of our comp plan, which is where the housing and economic development is a major part of that. And so I was feeling really good up until the break, because the comp plan was really getting some visibility, and people were talking about it. In a constructive way, and I'm not going to air my, any dirty laundry in public here, but I was disappointed in the Planning Commission study. I wasn't disappointed in any of the members of the commission, I wasn't disappointed in what they were trying to do, but I was disappointed in how it went, and not the result. I wasn't focused on, I wasn't on one side or the other, I was more interested in the process of how we make an important decision like this. And my major point here in comment is that it could have gone a lot better if we had a comprehensive, big-picture housing plan, which was recommended as a top priority in 2015 by a task force that I sat on, Lyle Olson sat on it, a number of realtors sat on it, we had 30 people in our community focused on the follow-up to the housing report of 2014, which gave 24 recommendations, nine of which related to rental housing. So that task force came out with seven priorities. The first one was, the city needs to staff up and assign someone to be in charge of promoting and improving on housing. Well, we did that, we followed through with that, and we hired a full-time community development director. And Samantha's been working very hard since she came on board a little over a year ago on housing, as well as a number of other things. However, we still don't have the comprehensive housing plan. We've got actions, we've got lists of things to do related to housing, but we do not have a comprehensive, big-picture housing plan to put the individual project ideas and so forth into some kind of perspective. One of the reasons we don't have it is, in 2015 March, when that task force came together, Ed Sheeta was the Community Economic Development Director. No one outside of Ben Roloff and myself were on the council. We had a different city administrator, we had, as I mentioned, we had Ed Sheeta, we didn't have Samantha, we had a different mayor. A lot of things have turned over since then, and this 2015 priority list has gotten lost in the shuffle. So, and we can talk more about this on Tuesday. We need to develop a comprehensive, big-picture housing plan that can be changed and adapted with specific actions and timelines, that all of the things that Samantha's working on, and all the things we got in our goals and our work plans and things, fit into a big-picture plan. The hearing, from my perspective, would have gone much better if we would have had that, and the Planning Commission could have referred to it, and we could have put the comp plan and those recommendations into a better perspective. I'm not pointing my thicker at anybody. I think we've made a lot of progress, people have been working their tails off, staff-wise, for the last several years, but we've had so much turnover, some important things have gotten lost in the shuffle, and that's one of them. And I look forward to our work session this next Wednesday night, where we're going to touch on the follow-up to that Planning Commission, and also talk more about the comp plan. These are very, very important things that we not only chip away at, but we have a comprehensive view of how they all tie together. And that takes work and time, and we've been working hard, but we need to get our act together as far as that housing plan.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fadlis.
Well, on a slightly lighter note. I appreciate what you said. No, I know, I know, I know.
It's constructive.
Our PAC meeting went well. We had our elections, as was stated earlier, we have, I think the whole group is looking forward to digging in and moving forward with that. We have the first date set up at MRF PUC, Jasper and I will wind up going up to St. Paul for the contested permit mediation, and that's going to be, we have three meetings that we're going to have to go to for the contested case. I wanted to just touch on, you know, we had a really nice celebration last weekend. It was great here in the city. First thing that led off was the teen dance, and I want to say a big thank you to the kids, that, all things considered, we had no fights, we had no issues, they helped clean up afterwards, and it was nice for the police department, a couple of the officers came out, not because there were problems, but again, just to see what was going on, watch the kids for a little bit, it was cool. There was a shout-out, the only way I'm going to be able to do this is to look at my phone, because I'm not going to remember this person's name, I'm not very good at that sometimes, but Jasper would know. There was a setup issue that happened, and they have the big hamster balls for the kids to be able to get into, and because some things were set up differently this year than last year, they set up, and there was a tree branch that was in the way, and, you know, the guy's got equipment out there to break if it gets popped, and it was a phone call to Tom Gurlik, and this was on a Saturday, and within a half an hour, we had, and Jasper, do you remember the gentleman's name?
Dave.
Dave. I'd have to look at the phone. Dave Otto. No guff about coming out on a Saturday, was happy to be able to do it, and honestly, that's what people are paying for in service in this town. We forget that when we pay our taxes, when we're paying our utilities, that these things go into services, and that there's a level of service that we should be receiving, and I just named three things that I saw within, well, three days, that just showed the level of service that I'm seeing, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Sullivan.
Had my first MRF PUC meeting, went well, quick, wasn't a lot to discuss this month. Did a tour of all the facilities with Jasper, it was interesting to see how the city has built over the years, because there's a lot of things that are new from when I was younger, and what I remember being at, when I had friends and family that worked for the city back in the day. So that was definitely enlightening to see, and how things are changing with some of our new management, just the updates that are happening. I'd like to piggyback on Johnny's comment about the celebration, I think we had a great town celebration, shout-out to all the businesses that do behind-the-scenes things for our town. There's a lot of businesses that you don't see recognition for, but there's a lot of people that put stuff into that, so just shout-out to them and thank you.
About our city clerk slash HR director slash wearer of many hats.
Thanks. So just a reminder, we have primary elections tomorrow, right here in the council chambers, they start at 7:00 AM, polls close at 8:00 PM. We, again, are one ward that was voted, we are still listed as two precincts, so when any of the voters come in, we'll be prepared with both books. If you don't know your precinct, that's fine, we'll get you all set up and get your ballot, so that is tomorrow. And also, we listed the Recreation and Community Education Coordinator position last, do you remember, Thursday, Wednesday? That link can be found on the city's homepage and our Facebook page.
What time do the polls close tomorrow?
8:00 PM.
8:00 PM.
Question. So if I was in Ward 1, and there's only one ward now, what precinct am I in?
You are most likely Precinct 1, but people don't always remember what ward they were in before either, so it's a little confusing this time, until we get the precincts merged.
So we're all Ward 1, but I should go to Precinct 1 to get to check in?
It's all in the same place.
Okay.
And there's going to be plenty of people that are going to be there to assist.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. About our city attorney.
Oh, sir.
Okay. Well, before I turn it on over to our city administrator to go ahead and be the hammer tonight, I've got a few things, too. I, too, would like to go ahead and thank everybody within the city of the sewer for everything they did to make Giant Celebration such a wonderful hit this past weekend, or two weekends ago now, actually. Little disappointed that we didn't have any water balloons or eggs come flying at us at the parade, but maybe that'll be next year. I do have an issue, though, and it came to me by several different people within the community, we have an awful lot of people within this community that suffer from various handicaps, and when we have something like Giant Celebration or other major events, I'm thinking about like the tree lighting thing that we'll do in December, we may want to think about what we can do to go ahead and have temporary, not permanent, but temporary handicap signs, because we had two for Giant Celebration up there, two. And I know that we have a lot more than two people that are handicapped, I being one. So I think that we're going to have to work together with the various committees that, in this case, like the Giant Celebration Committee, and perhaps other things that we can work with to try to get additional signage for these types of spots. Second thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to let everybody know that we're having our dog park dedication on August 20th over at our new dog park. It's really looking beautiful over there, and I'm sure all the Fidos within the community are very happy. The one thing that everybody needs to know about the dog park is that it requires a dog tag to use the dog park. So let's make sure that everybody gets dog tags, and I think our city administrator is going to talk a little bit more about that process when it's his turn.
When's the date of the dedication?
The 20th of August.
So right during the dog days of summer.
Yeah, well, there you go. Okay? And then we have a dog swim for the first time ever on the 21st of August, and again, he'll give us the exact times over at our pool. And last but not least, I'd like to go ahead and do a thank you to an extremely packed council chambers this past Thursday for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I thought everybody represented themselves well. I'd like to give a special thank you to the 23 people that took the time to get on up there and speak. It takes a lot of courage to get up and talk in front of anybody, and I really want to applaud those people that took that time. Believe me, we've heard, we've heard your voices, okay? So with that said, there is a process involved in regards to how we move forward with this. We, as a city, are going to do everything within our ability to make sure that we follow the process exactly as it has to be, so I hope that our citizens can be patient with the process, we'll certainly do everything in our ability to keep you informed on what's going on and what the next steps are. And with that, city administrator Krugel.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, I'm just going to go through a bunch of meetings that we have this week, isn't so bad, well, I shouldn't say bad, isn't so packed. Next week, though, we have a lot of stuff going on. So we have a Personnel and Budget Committee meeting on Wednesday, the 15th, at 2:30 PM. We're going to just go over the budget again, go over some of the more detailed line items, and we're going to just basically get it prepped for the full council to discuss it and look at it on the 27th. What we're going to be looking at is bringing the preliminary levy on the 10th of September, so barring any major items that are brought up at the 27th, I think we're on schedule. The Personnel and Budget Committee has done a lot of work, I think they've set a good precedence for what's required to look at the budget. Still waiting for Mayor Hague's comments on the 20-some-thousand dispersments that we had last year, I think he's still going through those. But, you know, it's a good process, and I think that it works pretty well. So we have that Personnel and Budget So we have that Personnel and Budget Committee. And then on the twentieth, uh, starting off of Monday, we have a, well, the, the Dog Park Grand Opening. Uh, what we're going to do is have, uh, just some events. We've talked to some local vets, uh, to get some doggie bags and things like that out there. But we will be able to, uh, register your dog, license your dog, get you information about licensing your dog on-site. So if you show up, you can actually get your dog registered, uh, but bring your vaccination records for that year. Uh, it's seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, and, uh, yeah, you'll be able to use the Dog Park for the rest of the year for that. I believe it's three to five PM, three PM to five PM. Uh, just keep an eye on Facebook, I think Stacy's working on a nice post to, to get that out, so.
Three-thirty to five-thirty.
Three-thirty to five-thirty. And then on the twenty-first, uh, Tuesday, we're looking at doing something, I think we're kind of calling it a doggie dip. So the, the, the pool officially closes on the nineteenth, the outdoor pool closes on the nineteenth of August. And, uh, what other communities have done, and it's been fairly successful, is they allow, uh, residents to bring their dogs. You sign a waiver of liability, uh, you can enter the pool. If you want to actually get in with the dogs, you can, um, but your dog can go and you can throw stuff. And maybe some dogs haven't been in water before, it's a good, good time. Um, we do have ramps that will sit on the edge so the dogs can climb out if they choose. But some dogs may need help, uh, we will have two lifeguards on duty as well. Uh, but I believe that's from five PM to seven PM, um, we'll confirm that as well. So it's kind of a neat, neat thing, and it's, it's popular. Some cities, what they do is they'll do one day for larger dogs and one day for smaller dogs just to keep them separated, just because of their size. We'll see how it goes, we'll see how many dogs we get from, you know, each size grouping. And then we may, may change it up next year to maybe be two days if it's very popular. But that does cost, uh, two dollars per dog, that's what we're going to charge. That basically covers the lifeguards, um, to, to be there and, and just in case somebody needs some assistance. Uh, we do have that RPAC meeting on the twenty-first. And one, one thing that we're going to look at in RPAC, one of the first things is looking at some of the capital items that were in the twenty-eighteen Capital Improvement Plan, and then look at what's being proposed for twenty-nineteen and see where we're at progress-wise. Uh, another thing that they'll be looking at throughout this budget process is, uh, potentially the, the rates at the community center, just to give it a good overview, see if they're set up in a manner that we feel is appropriate, and look at the different combinations and, uh, revenue combinations that come with the different types of, of, uh, memberships that we can offer. But yeah, that's the, that's the big task, is looking at some of the budget stuff. Uh, and I, I mentioned that there is a city council update on the budget on the twenty-seventh and that prelim budget on the, on the tenth of September. So August has been a busy month so far, but we're getting a lot of stuff accomplished. Oh, yeah, Charter Commission on the twentieth too, uh, before, or after the, the Dog Park Grand Opening, so. Uh, yeah, well, in, in the Charter Commission, this is a, an important meeting because we currently, right now, have quite a few vacancies technically. Uh, we have taken action, uh, through ordinance to adopt another chapter in our char, in our charter that gives guidance on membership. So we're going to be going from fifteen members to nine. So we're going to have the tough conversation with some existing, uh, existing city council members that are on the Charter Commission and see once if they're willing to, um, step down. Because the, the, the current language is that there will be one council member, um, that will be on the, on the Charter Commission and possibly two if we can't fill, uh, that last vacancy by, with a, with a resident. So we'll look at that, we'll get into detail. And then I think we're going to talk about starting to just look at, uh, maybe a chapter of the charter every meeting we have and just go through it and make sure that there aren't any changes that we want to start talking about. So just kind of the due diligence of having a Charter Commission, um, to, to look at these things. So that, that's the basis of that. It's a, it's a, you know, it's change, and, and I think that having nine members versus fifteen will help, um, just get, get some additional people that are interested in it. We have had, you know, some quorum close calls, um, you know, so I don't think it really will affect much as far as quorum goes. But, you know, I think once, if, if we, if we keep the Charter Commission active, I think people will be interested in it. It has, Charter Commissions have a tendency to, to really slow down because it's our charter and not much changes with, with city charters. So, um, I think we're doing a good job of, of keeping an eye on it and making sure that it's the way we want it set up.
Question. Councilmember Johnson.
Can, can you build on that, that work session, the August twenty-second work session?
Yep, yeah, and there is a work session on August twenty-second, and I was going to pull up the agenda. Uh, we did have, um, basically a comp plan progress update. So looking at our comprehensive plan, looking at it in detail, seeing where we're at and some of the features of it. And then what we're going to do, what, what I believe we're still going to do, even though the, um, the PUD application has been withdrawn by INH Group, I think we're still going to go through what is required from that process. We'll utilize, uh, city attorney Todd Coriel, just to talk about some of the legal aspects of it. Um, just to make sure that if we, um, if we do have another PUD, we know what the legal implications are and what reasons for denial for approval, um, are acceptable. Um, essentially, if, if we deny an application, our city attorney has to be prepared to possibly fight that in, in a court situation. So we'll go into detail on that, we'll talk about some of the comp plan, um, comp plan action plans that each of the organizations or groups have had. We haven't talked about that, uh, much at all this year, but just giving an update on comp plan progress and what the other action groups are and what the, what kind of the roles and responsibilities are for each of these groups, which is tied to one of the, the city council priorities for this year is identifying and defining what the roles and responsibilities are of the various boards and commissions associated with the comprehensive plan. So, um, you know, just, just picking away at those, uh, those priorities that were developed in, in, I believe, January, and, uh, just going from there. So I think it'll be a good learning experience. I think, you know, it's very important to keep that comp plan on the forefront, always thinking about it. Um, always thinking about, you know, how we can leverage what's in there, um, cross-referencing potential projects. So, um, you know, I think it'll be a good thing, and, you know, I'm sure Dave will be very passionate about that council, that work session. We'll utilize his, uh, his passion for the comp plan to help drive some things.
I want to make sure that everybody on city council understands that we have nine days to get ourselves thoroughly reintroduced to everything associated with our comp plan, specifically, everything associated with housing, okay? So that's the homework from now until the twenty-second for our work session. Is there anything else that anybody has tonight to present?
Yeah, on the twenty-second, we also have, uh, from eleven to one, the Life Rev.
Ooh.
Is, uh, we have a, a meeting with that as well, and that is a, um...
Eleven to one.
That's a learning session, actually.
Do you want to tell the, tell everybody what Life Rev is, please?
Probably turn it on again.
Rev is a program, uh, that we, we belong to, that we renamed for the city of La Sure, which is the La Sure Initiative for Entrepreneurs. And, um, uh, that is an organization put together to, um, to compile all the resources that are needed for entrepreneurs in, in town. And it's not meant to be, um, a city organization that is run by the city. It's to, uh, to, to get the organ, uh, to get the organizational, um, material, everything put together and get the entrepreneurs to, um, to kind of steamroll this thing along, uh, so that they, uh, so we have the, the life program and then what I call life support. And that's where these folks that are going through the program and working with, uh, with, coming up with the different, um, the different resources that are needed also contribute back into the programming for helping other entrepreneurs. And the idea that, uh, you know, being an entrepreneur and having multiple companies, there's always things that I'm looking for that, that it's hard to find other people in town that would know the resources that I need. And, uh, other people's businesses can be unique. And rather than going outside of the city, it's faster to be able to get the resources that you need in, in-house, basically.
Thank you. Deadline tomorrow is what time for making sure that anybody that's seeking, uh, city council, uh, what is it, five PM by tomorrow?
Five o'clock, correct.
So five PM tomorrow, we have to make sure we have your applications, or I should say your petition form with your twenty-five signatures and your two dollars turned into city staff because we know that everybody out there just can't wait to get on board city council. Okay? And I got some people right here that I know I got everybody here that's going to be signing up, correct? Good deal. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
If there's any discussion. Have a great day, everyone.